Good evening, welcome to our Pullman City Council meeting for this February 25th. And we're in a little different configuration tonight. We're not up there because it's going to be a work session as we hear about our downtown plans and we're going to get a presentation from Brian tonight. So, we're in this configuration, so first of all, let's take a roll, Dee.
Mayor Johnson.
Present.
Councilmember Sorensen.
Here.
Councilmember Parks.
Here.
Councilmember Chapman.
Here.
Councilmember Records.
Here.
Councilmember McCall.
Here.
Councilmember Weller.
Present.
Councilmember Wright.
Here.
Under announcements tonight, Pullman Public Schools dismissed early on Wednesday, so youth in grades six through 12 are invited to head to Neal Public Library to join your friends for chess, checkers, free pizza, drinks from 12:30 to 3:00. Stay for a while or all afternoon, all supplies are provided. TSA Pre-Check saves time at the airport and between March 2nd and the 6th, Pullman event will take place and all you have to do is go online and find out exactly where and sign up to have the pre-check done for you. And to go along with that, it was announced officially on Monday, we actually heard from Congresswoman Kathy McMorris Rogers on Thursday, that we were the one airport picked in the state of Washington for the Small Services Air Grant, which will help us attract another airline to come out of Pullman. And the one that we've been working with, and we actually have a letter of endorsement from, is United Airlines with a flight that goes to Pullman directly to Denver in a jet, 50-passenger jet. It would be done by Sky West, at least that's the one we've been talking with. Tony Bean, representatives from the Pullman Chamber and the Moscow Chamber will be going to meet with the different airlines next week and have another chance to talk to them. But, we're one of the, we were actually one of the only ones that actually had a letter of endorsement from United Airlines for this. It opens up at least 30 different destinations that you cannot get to from C-TAC. So, especially those going to South America, now maybe not with this virus going around, but with trips to South America, we'll have to talk to people that say that it'll save them a whole day in travel because they'll go right from here to Denver and they can take the flight next to different places in South America. So, it's going to be a really neat thing. Now, when it starts, we have to go through all that process, it has to get through as far as scheduling is concerned, could be a six-month wait, but that, nothing has been secured yet. We just know that we have a letter of endorsement and that's pretty encouraging. Join the homegrown nonprofit, We Honor Every American Troop, also Wheat, to provide goods, time, services, or funds towards frequent care packages, necessities, comfort items for troops deployed abroad. Learn more, you can call 509-549-7827. Every third Saturday through April, Pullman Winter Market at Brawlsford WSU Visitor Center. Next one will be on March 21st from 10:00 AM to 2:00. With that, next item is a consent agenda. These items are considered routine in nature and do I hear a motion to read by title only?
So moved.
Second.
Move and second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? With that, Laura McAlune, our city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. Your consent agenda consists of a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the regular meeting of February 11, 2020, and approve them as submitted. A motion to approve accounts payable dispersments totaling $220,714.75. A motion to approve various dispersments totaling $1,356,816.53. A motion to approve accounts payable dispersments totaling $1,250,846.78. A motion to approve a lodging tax grant up to $4,000 to COOG's first QB Classic Golf Tournament to be held on April 23 to 24, 2020. A motion to approve a lodging tax grant up to $11,000 to Pullman Arts Commission for Art Fest, which will be held May 14 to 16, 2020. A motion to accept the PATHS 2019 contract as complete. A motion to accept the tennis court refurbishment contract as complete. A motion to accept the Crestview Street miscellaneous stormwater improvements contract as complete. A motion to ratify change order number two to the City Hall and Parks and Recreation Center relocation contract. A motion to ratify change order number one to the Pullman wastewater treatment plant headworks perforated plate screen project. Resolution number R-4-20, a resolution authorizing the execution of a city safety program grant application to the Washington State Department of Transportation. Resolution number R-5-20, a resolution authorizing the acceptance of Washington State Department of Commerce grant for airport utility extension project. And resolution number R-6-20, a resolution adopting the Parks Facilities and Recreation 2020 to 2025 Comprehensive Five-Year Plan for the City of Pullman.
Any item the council would like out? Pat, you said you wanted a five pool?
Like five.
Okay, and Eileen, you said?
Six and 14.
Six and 14.
There, did I get eight?
And eight. Okay. That means our consent agenda consists of items 1, 2, 3, 4, 7, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Second.
Move and second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? With that, Pat, we'll go to you for number five.
Thank you, Glenn. So, I've, after reviewing this grant request a little bit further today in preparation for our meeting, I have asked the committee to have this pulled so that we can ask for additional information from the requestee. It was somewhat of an incomplete document and we feel that we need to give it some additional consideration and so it'll go back to the committee for re-recommendation to come forward to the council and then for council approval in the next timeframe.
Okay. Item six, Eileen.
Kind of in an odd way following up on what Pat said here, the Art Fest request was perhaps the best application we have seen. It was complete, it was compelling, it was just about inspiring as to where they're going with Art Fest and how they're going to get there. And I believe every word of their sincerity, this, you know, there's been some questions about LTAC money and some pressure put on various people to, to, to provide excellent information and Jerry Harrison, her team, has really come up to it. And I would recommend that they get the full award, but it would set their process back 45 days for a very modest amount of money. So, I'm going to recommend that we, we go with this for tonight for the 11,000. It's going to be money well spent, this was a terrific event last year, they did their homework and they're going to build on it and I can't wait for it. I think it's going to be absolutely fantastic. Thank you, Jerry and her team.
Jerry, you've done a fantastic job with that. Do I hear a motion to approve it?
Motion to approve item six on consent agenda.
Do we have a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? With that, number 14.
Is the Parks and Recreation Five-Year Plan, and again, Kurt and Alan and Marlene really put their shoulder to the wheel tightening up this document and making it something that we're all very, very proud of. I really pulled them through an eye hole on this and they did a fantastic job. And it reads just beautifully and again, it's inspirational, it tells our story of what we're doing for our community and where, where we're going with this. It's a great document and thank you for all the hard work they put in on this. It was, it was rough.
Would you like to make a motion on that?
I move that we approve R-620.
Second.
Move and second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number eight.
Yes, I just wanted to get some clarity from, I guess it would either be Kurt or Alan on the tennis court refurbishment, just to maybe put me at ease on signifying this is complete when we know that there are enormous problems with the resurfacing. Now, I know it says that they're going to work on this as a warranty issue.
Later this year.
Later this year. But I just wanted to get some clarity and I don't see Kurt or Alan. Oh, Alan's there.
Yes, my understanding is that the warranty work they're aware of and they're coming back in the spring to do that, and my understanding on the completion of this was the contract award was being held for a year. So, they want to move forward, accept the contract as is what we're working on.
Okay, over here.
So, accepting the contract as complete is the process that's required in order for the retainage to be released, that, for prevailing wage. So, accepting the contract as complete actually doesn't prevent us from pursuing any type of the warranty issues. It, it just allows, it's those final steps of they've paid prevailing wage, they've filed the proper certificates with LNI, and it's, it's a, it's something you have to do in order to finalize the contract.
So, do we, in situations like this, are there certain monies that we retain, like a performance bond, if you mind, in a development or?
So, this contract has a warranty as compared to, I don't believe it has a performance bond, but I don't have it in front of me, but it, it doesn't look to me.
But in order to pursue the warranty, you have to accept as complete and then you can move the next step.
Well, the contract, if, the, the work isn't declared complete and
Yeah, till you.
Which triggers the warranty start. So, it's just something that would be pursued under warranty as compared to saying that they're not done with the work. They've done the work, there's just some warranty issues that need to be fixed with it.
Thank you.
Do I hear a motion?
Yes. Move to adopt.
Second.
Move and second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we now move to the regular agenda. We have one item before we start talking about the downtown plan, and that is from Police Chief Gary Jenkins.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Tonight I'm asking for council to authorize me to apply for a 2020 Community Policing Development MICRO grant to the U.S. Department of Justice Community Avoided Policing Services. The proposed grant will fund research to understand the use and effectiveness of de-escalation techniques in the field. Nationwide, there's a significant emphasis for law enforcement to employ de-escalation tactics whenever possible. However, there currently exists no data directly demonstrating that de-escalation techniques are effective in reducing use of force rates or diminishing emotional intensity. In this project, the Pullman Police Department will work with Dr. David Macon and his Complex Social Interactions Lab at Washington State University to analyze body worn camera footage to determine the effectiveness of various de-escalation techniques at the incident level in real-life situations. The grant will fund the WSU research and training equipment for Pullman Police Department. The maximum award per grant is $100,000. There is no local match required and the grant application is due March 11th. We believe that the research will not only facilitate development of agency-specific best practices and training, but will also inform law enforcement at a national level on de-escalation tactics with the possibility of a future grant to develop artificial reality and virtual reality training scenarios with the use of body worn camera footage.
Any questions of Gary on this? If not, you've heard the presentation, do I hear a motion on this?
Move to adopt.
Certainly.
Move and second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? With that, go to Kevin Gardis and we'll start the report on the Pullman Downtown Master Plan that we're here to hear tonight and think we've already heard from at least a couple of council members and this will be the first of several sessions that we'll be working on this one.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. In August of 2018, Council adopted a strategic goal of developing a master plan for downtown Pullman. We put it in the budget in 2019, went through the selection process, we selected BDS Planning and Urban Design, and in June 2019, they got underway with preparing downtown master plan for the city. That work is nearing completion. Brian Scott of BDS is here tonight and will present the final draft of the master plan. Brian will also present tomorrow night to the Pullman Planning Commission. And the reason we did it that way was we were trying to be able to do it in one trip with Brian, so council Tuesday night, Planning Commission Wednesday night, that's how we picked that. The final draft of the master plan was distributed to the public via the city website last week on February 19th.
Again, the word draft.
Draft, final draft, yep. One of the tasks and the scope was key stakeholder interval, interviews, and I thought this was kind of just interesting to note. The original plan was for interviewing up to 20 key stakeholders and BDS, I'm sure, went well over 40 by the time it was all said and done because there just kept being more suggestions of people to talk to. And so, when you combine that with the input we got at the Lentle Fest and the design charrette that we did in October, the two days, we actually have gotten quite a bit of public in, input and done a lot of outreach as part of this project. Seventeen-person steering committee provided oversight throughout and provided review and feedback in the beginning, during the design charrette and with the 80% draft. Couple council members are on that steering committee. As the master plan draws to a close, it is now time to start a discussion on prioritization of recommendations in the master planning, including public works improvements. Just as a note, staff are just getting started on work for the city's capital improvement program for the years 2021 through 2026, so that's our six-year CIP and those are due in April, so it's good timing with wrapping this up. Staff will also be working on the next two-year budget this summer, so understanding what council's priorities are with respect to the Central Business District Master Plan is important for staff as we try to put the budget and projects together. So, at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Brian Scott to present on the final draft and then we'll open it up to questions and conversation.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I'm Brian Scott, I'm the principal at BDS Planning and Urban Design. Glad to be here with you again this evening. Kevin gave a nice, nice introduction to what we're here to do. I want to walk through the key elements of the master plan tonight, and there's just a ton of detail in this plan. You've all probably had a chance to at least look at it, I know you've had it for a week or two. It's, there's a lot of stuff in there. So, there's a lot of content on these slides and I'm going to kind of just slide over the surface because otherwise we're going to be here all night if I try and go through every single subtle recommendation. But, what I want to talk a little bit about the process, about the overall vision for downtown, and then dive into the six key actions that are the bulk of the plan and then give you a sense of where I think your first priority moves might be, but then I think your, your discussion after this and questions will be focused on where you see your priorities going forward.
Excuse me, just to talk more directly into the mic.
Is that better?
Thank you.
I also have a cold, so I'm not going to project as much as I normally would, so thank you, thank you for calling me out on that. And I will, I try not to cough any more than I have to. So, the, the consulting team that was involved in this was BDS Planning and Urban Design. We've been focused on doing downtown revitalization in communities of all sizes. I've been doing that for 40 years and the firm has been for the whole 11 years it's been around. Framework is an urban design and architecture firm focuses on community placemaking. Welch Comer is a civil engineering firm based in Coeur d'Alene that does a lot of sort of transportation work in communities like Pullman. And ED Hovey and companies and economics consulting firm that's done lots of downtown work. So, it was a nice blend of firms that brought different expertise to the plan. The process, Kevin gave you a, actually a real good overview of it. We sort of gave a loose definition of, of the downtown study area. We first started with kind of a precise line and every time we drew a line in a precise place, we got pushed back, so we finally drew more vague lines. Generally, you know, the, the intersection of Grand and Main might be the, kind of the nexus of downtown, but it's all along Main and kind of a little bit on both sides of the river, a little bit past Grand, at least past the visitor center to the, to the east. We went through, Kevin gave a good overview of the process and we're just right here at the end there, you can see the circle on the right, with the city council tonight and the planning commission tomorrow. We did several community events, two nights at the master plan charrette in October. We had a booth at the Lentle Festival, we did lots, lots of stakeholder interviews, as Kevin mentioned. All in all, there were well over 100 people from Pullman that were involved in this process at one time or another, some of them a whole bunch of times. I got to know a lot of the folks in the room pretty well during this process and, and people, I told people never to hesitate to reach out and I'll tell you, there were a bunch of people that didn't hesitate. Steering Committee did a great job, they met four times, right at the outset to kind of give us some direction and tour the downtown and talk about the issues. They met two times during the charrette to help focus the work we were going to do at the charrette and then interpret what we heard back from the community. And then they met again in December to look to receive and review and comment on the 80% draft of the plan. At Lentle Festival, we had a booth out there, Kevin spent most of the two days out there as well as a member of the BDS staff. We had people like writing their ideas on building blocks for, for the downtown, we got a lot of positive feedback on that and then we had all the building blocks at the community charrette later on. We did an overview of strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats for the downtown, had a lot of discussion of those. And then we had this two-day master plan charrette, which was a process where the whole consulting team was in town for all of two days. We met with the steering committee in the morning, we worked all the way through the day, that, on the first day to develop, to identify the key issues and talk about options that there were, and then we had a community meeting with over 80 people in attendance to give us feedback on those issues. And then we, the second morning, we met again with the steering committee to help us interpret what we'd heard and focus. And then we worked through that day to develop the master plan concept, which was the very first draft of the plan that you have in front of you now, came out in real time during that meeting during those days and we again got a lot of feedback and we got a lot of support, but we also made a number of modifications based on the feedback we got during that meeting. The vision where we ended up was that, is really the, the main thing is to recognize that downtown Pullman is really the heart of the Palouse. It's, it's the place that if you're going to come to college here or you're going to come to work here, you're going to be in the region, it's the place that you're going to identify with and it's the place you're going to look at and say, is this a good place? Do I want to be here? Am I proud of my hometown? Am I glad to bring my, my guests here? It's just really a key and, and I think that one of the things Pullman can do is really step up and embrace that and really celebrate its downtown as the heart of this region. We identified six key actions that we think will achieve that heart of the Palouse notion. Enhancing the gems, building people-centric, activating public spaces, magnifying the core, encouraging entrepreneurship, and catalyzing leadership. And I want to dig in a little bit of what we mean in all of those. In my experience, from many decades of working with downtowns of all sizes, is it, in my experience, it never, if you just do physical improvements or if you just do marketing and promotions, it doesn't work. You have to do all those pieces together, so it's not an accident that on that list there are things that are specific physical improvements, there are marketing and promotions, there are organizational improvements. It's, you have to do all those things at once to really manage the overall success. Enhancing the gems was a thing that came out, is we all took a look at Pullman and, and we heard people, I think when we were doing the stakeholder interviews and the first input, there was a lot of pessimism about, you know, there's nothing there downtown. And I'll even admit being guilty of taking a look at first and maybe agreeing with But then I took a second look and when people started telling me about things, there's a lot of things going on in downtown Pullman that are really kind of great. And somehow, there's something about the way you all see it or talk about it or celebrate it, it's easy to overlook it. And we identified, you know, 25 or 30 businesses that are something to be proud of, historic buildings, public spaces, the river, there are a whole variety of things in the downtown that really can be celebrated and we think you should be doing everything you can to retain those activities and celebrate them and promote them. This means there's an abundance of places that are worth celebrating, they reflect Pullman's history and identity, they make downtown special and unique, they should be widely promoted. Historic preservation, there are a number of buildings that are either listed on or eligible for the National Register of Historic Places. We should be developing design standards and guidelines to shape how those are protected and adopting demolition standards so you don't lose those because those really special historic buildings you have, if they're gone, you can't build a new one that's that special. And so, really protecting those ones that are historic. Design review program, you know, you should adopt a design review ordinance and build it into your code, design standards and guidelines, a design review board to advise and review building proposals, a design review manual and make sure that your staff has the expertise and the training to administer those things. We think that'd really help because your downtown is really a nice scale and there's been sort of fear about new development and certainly reaction to evolve being built at a bigger scale and a different style than things. And recognize if you had five or six of those, the downtown would be completely different. So, really trying to get involved in reviewing new projects and understanding how they fit with the scale and the character of your downtown and having standards for that. There are a number of places where we think you can make some adjustments to your zoning code, both in the CBD, C2 zone and the R4 high-density zone, to encourage WSU-affiliated artisanal or maker spaces, adjusting height limits to encourage well-designed five-story residential buildings with high ground floor retail, to set residential parking minimums so that when you have new residential in the downtown, you've got, it's got parking for it, and some adjustments to the residential zone. This is to encourage additional development in the downtown, but to fit within the character of your existing downtown. You've got a great trail system. One of the best things Pullman's got going for it is all the energy that's gone into the trail system over the last 10 or 20 years, the, the civic trust and all of that stuff has done just great work and they have great plans for additional things, so we want to gain control of the trestle and integrate that into the, into the trail system. We want to increase options for river crossing, we want to increase options for crossing Grand Avenue, an at-grade crossing at the railroad signal on Grand Avenue, pursuing a below-grade crossing near the river, the number of ideas to connect the trail system better and we think those are really good and really important. Second key action is building people-centric. And this is maybe the one that has the most pages in the plan, but it's about really trying to recognize that your downtown is for people. And to make downtown successful, it needs to feel good to be a person in the downtown and a person that's not in a car. It's also okay to be a person in a car, but eventually we want everybody to get out of their car downtown and has to feel good for that, so we need to recognize that people are the main thing. We think there's specific improvements that can happen to Main Street, Paradise, Grand Avenue, and probably the biggest and the most asked for in every single conversation we had is moving Main Street from three lanes to two lanes. So, reducing the number of lanes and then reconfiguring the curb-to-curb area with painted lane changes. And this means, this is pretty simple to do, actually, you can do most of this with paint. Two 11-foot traffic lanes, a 10-foot bike lane, back-end angle parking on the south side, parallel parking on the north side. So, you can actually just make all of those changes by taking out one lane. We studied this several different ways, we had Welch Comer doing, working with the Public Works Department and, and conversations with the Washington Transportation Department. You can get away, two lanes is enough on Main Street. And then making sure there's adequate pedestrian space, that there are bike parking facilities and that there are Americans with disability that accessible parking spaces in the diagonal parking area. I want to make sure that you build that in. We heard very clearly that there's not enough disabled accessible parking in the downtown and I think those folks were right. And so, making sure you're building that in, making it a priority when you're making these configurations is very important. And so, there's diagrams in there showing exactly how that can work. So, you've got, and this is, this is Main Street and you've got angle parking on this side of the street and then parallel parking on this side of the street. We recommend it's back-end angle parking, so the way you drive up like this and then back into the parking place. That might sound counterintuitive, but the nice thing about back-end angle parking is when you're back again, you've actually already blocked the traffic behind you and you've got time to back into the space. Whereas if you front into an angle space, when you're backing out, you can't see where you're going and you're driving, you're pulling into a traffic lane. This actually works a lot better even though it's a little counterintuitive. And it's a nice straight, flat street, so it's a pretty easy place to execute that. Longer term, rebuilding the street section and converting the, the street to two-way traffic is something that we think can work and, but that'll take further study and further negotiations with the state and relationship to Paradise, so it's a longer-term proposal. You can get the three lanes to two lanes in the short term with just some paint. We should, I think you should install a prominent art piece to further the visibility of some of the public spaces there and make sure, we note several places in here that consider the loading needs of businesses that are there because sometimes we talked about these things, business sort of flagged that they've got loading things. So that needs to be considered. Don't inadvertently block somebody's access to have a truck being able to make their deliveries. Diagram of longer term on East Main Street showing two-way traffic there. Making pedestrian crossings easier. Study pedestrian priority signal phasing during off-peak hours, particularly across Grand. Shorten crosswalks with curb bulbs and narrowed lanes, and adjust signal timing, adding leading pedestrian interval for pedestrian safety. So a lot of this is just working in the details of the crosswalks and the configurations of the pedestrian space there to make it feel better to be a pedestrian in your downtown. Downtown parking, we hear, everywhere you hear a lot about downtown parking. We think you have enough parking, so that's not the issue. But managing parking better can really make sense. You can do new management strategies when, for when occupancy gets above eighty percent, which it doesn't very often. You wanna right-size the streets based on traffic volumes, which is gonna add parking by adding that angle parking. You can prioritize on-street parking for customers and visitors, not for long-term parkers like business, but for workers and residents. You can pursue shared parking in partnership with community and business organizations of where there are places where the business needs the parking one time a day, and then maybe residents could use it another time a day. Encourage long-term parkers, employees and residents to park off the street in designated lots or garages. Develop an updated wayfinding system so people can know where the parking is, really make that more well-known. You have a lot of city-owned parking, so everybody should know about that. Redevelop existing surface parking lots to support new uses when you have a chance for that. Maintain an event parking management plan for the downtown. And also, the, the chief of police has been working on several short-term strategies, and we think they make a lot of sense, and you ought to proceed with those. And then, as repeating what I said before, ensuring accessibility, add ADA accessible parking spaces in the newly created angle parking, as well as in the existing city surface parking lots. Activating public spaces, this is more focused less on the streets, but more on the plazas, the High Street Plaza, the Pine Street Plaza, the Cougar Plaza. East Main Street, improve sidewalks and street furnishings, working with local businesses and downtown interests on design details, and working with artists to reinstall lighting on the trees. Some minor improvements there. Pine Street, treating Pine Street like an extension of Pine Street Plaza. And, and we, we think this is, this is showing, this is showing Pine Street next to Evolve as it is, and then as it could be, an image of how it could be. Planting street trees to install landscaping where possible, avoiding blockage of service entries. Maximize curb bulbs at the intersection of Main and Pine, and contrast the trees on Pine Street with those along Main Street. So we think there's, you know, Evolve is there, and it's gonna be like it is, but there's an opportunity to make the, the, the experience of being on Pine Street much nicer with some landscaping and some curb, curb bulbs at the corner with Main. On Olson Street, add angle parking on both sides with one traffic lane in each direction. Consider a signature downtown bus stop near the Cougar Plaza. We think this is a great idea. The, the existing transfer station for the buses is up the hill ways, kinda out of the downtown. It'd be great if that was in the downtown, so people that are there making a transfer have a chance to do business downtown. There's a lot of space on Olson between the library and Cougar Plaza. We think that could really be turned into a great public space, as well as a major bus stop. Create a mid-block crossing, and just consider making that into a really great space. I think there's a couple of images in the plan of, of the configurations for how that can work. Paradise Street, this is another sort of significant change. We think Paradise Street could go from two lanes to one lane, allowing for angle parking, including ADA accessible parking. We, a lot of debate about this. We asked ourselves several times, do we really mean this? And we think traffic volume supported that that could be one lane. Add street trees where possible. Consider undergrounding power lines. There's just a lot of power lines on that street. Maybe working in partnership with some of the private property owners. Consider the loading needs of businesses. And consider a downtown gateway sign or, or at Grand and Paradise to really celebrate the fact that you're coming into downtown. Illustrations of that in the plan. Grand Avenue, selectively add street trees on South Grand. Promote quality infill on city-owned parking across Grand from Cougar Plaza. There's a city-owned parking lot right there at the corner across from Cougar Plaza. We think that'd be a swell location for a small boutique hotel or something. It's not a great location for a parking lot. We think there's a development opportunity there. You might put out a request for proposals to, to developers to see about their interest in that. And adjust the intersection geometry and single changes to make it more pedestrian-friendly and easier to cross the street at that corner. And then a public art program. We think really, a lot of things to really celebrate that and think about, you know, finding two or three or four iconic pieces of public art that really are something where, you know, somebody that's gonna meet for a date, they say, I'll meet you at the statue of, of whatever it is, or at the fountain, or, or something. Just create some places that really create imageability and sort of something that's memorable and grand and exciting. There's some examples from other communities in the plan and on the screen. High Street Plaza, we think there's a lot of potential for High Street Plaza that I think is one of the places that kinda got this whole process going, was talking about High Street Plaza. We think it's important to leave the twelve-foot access lane on the west side, cause it's there for emergency access, and the thirty-four-foot wide terraced grassy areas on the east side along the mural. Incorporating lighting into terrace steps, installing a small raised platform or stage for informal seating, installing prominent art pieces to increase visibility, redoing the trees in the paving in the plaza to highlight the historic facade. There's that beautiful Flatiron Building right there. Plant trees near Main Street with distinctive seasonal color, and be sure to direct stormwater to the runnel adjacent to the terraces. So a bunch of specific recommendations there. And in the plan, we have several illustrations or photographs of other places to kind of for inspiration for what you might use there. And then some illustrations of what that might look like in the plan. Pine Street Plaza is probably a little more functional currently, but we wanna maintain the decorative paving and add movable furniture and landscape to reinforce those, the nice cobbles that are there. Install a signature feature such as a movable fire pit, or a, a major fountain, or, or statue to draw visitors. Activate the plaza for seasonal celebrations. Include Pine Street and Main Street for larger festivals so that it should, you should be able to kind of spill out across Main Street onto Pine Street across, across the way there. And install character lighting to highlight the murals and create inviting and safe route to the trestle. I think these are pretty simple improvements here. Again, we've put in some illustrations of kinda inspirational ideas for there. And then, and then this is a picture of Pine Street Plaza before, and we, we put in a photo illustration of what that might look afterwards. I can't tell how well those are showing up from here. They look not very good from here. But maybe, maybe you can see them in the plan if they're not showing up very well there. The cultural corridor, this is our idea of sort of building off of Olson Street, and we think there's a chance for, and there's actually a lot of interesting stuff going on here. So there's, the, the library is here, Grand Avenue, Main Street. There's actually a parking lot and some real interesting spaces in here behind these buildings, behind the Art Top Theater, behind the flower shop, and it's Cougar Plaza. And then you've got the library, and you've got the river, the depots down here. And we think building a cultural corridor through here is an opportunity to create really a cool public space. I already talked about the major bus transfer station in here, getting some angle parking on Olson Street, and then enhancing these deals. So developing a mid-block plaza or street crossing on Olson, connecting the new pedestrian path along the library, improving the library facade, and consider art-related building site. Maybe there's some of that parking there. You could find another arts facility that could go in there, install a short bridge section for pedestrian access to the depot, connecting to the trestle. And consider, again, important to consider the loading needs of the businesses that are in there. But we think there's really some interesting spaces in there that could be developed and make, make, actually make Cougar Plaza work a lot better, cause there was more things working around it and gave us some cross-activation. Magnify the core, too. Downtown Pullman's pretty small, and we ought to be thinking about how can we promote what's there and get, get it more attention for what's already there, but then expand our image of what's there. So reconsider downtown's boundaries, review the comprehensive plan and zoning maps for a broader definition of the city center. Develop a broader public-facing base map of the downtown. I think there's a lot of, one thing that I'll get to in a minute is the Pullman Downtown Association in partnership with the city and the chamber. I think you could be doing a lot more about promoting downtown. That includes getting some maps out there so people know what's downtown and where those gems are and all the great things that are there, is really trying to promote what's happening. Branding and wayfinding, investing and developing, implementing a comprehensive branding and wayfinding strategy. Some examples there. I love that arch over the street in Troutdale, Oregon, that's got this great thing, says Gateway to the Columbia Gorge, and it's right over the Main Street. It's just a beautiful piece of art that everybody kinda relates to. Fifth pillar is, or a major action is encourage entrepreneurship. You have a number of great businesses in the downtown and a number of great entrepreneurs and property owners who've done some good things. And what we wanna do is get more people like them and help them expand even more than they are. You really wanna make it known that the city and everybody in town loves them, making those investments in the downtown and trying to succeed. So you wanna think about refilling vacant storefronts, working, maybe partnering with WSU and building owners and artists to implement an art program to put some art in some of the vacant storefronts that are there now, so that they're more active and vital even before you have businesses in there. Longer term, providing some sort of incentives to keep storefronts occupied. I've been amazed over the years at how pretty small investment in a low-interest loan program or a small matching grant program will inspire people to invest in a business, put up an on and improve their sign, improve their facade. I've been, it's been amazing to me what a small amount of money could, could do. Support storefront re-leasing to help bridge the gaps between landlords and tenants. Implement downtown design guidelines. A lot of those things can really be helped with the Downtown Association, being more active and having a, a staff person to help make these things work is just working with people who know what options are available. And then encouraging multifamily housing tax exemptions, which is a program that is available to you to help give a tax break to developers of multifamily housing, to get more housing in your downtown, which I think is a great market opportunity. The housing that you have is often pretty good, and it's all full. Fazed public parking lot redevelopment, I mentioned that before. We think there are a variety of the city parking lots that you probably don't need in the long run, or they could be, you, you might eventually decide you wanna build a small garage, but I don't think you have to start there. I think developing a request for proposals to get to see about developer interest in going into partnership with the city and redeveloping one or two of the city-owned lots. You have a bunch of lots the city owns. And then the last major action is catalyzing leadership, which is really trying to make sure this whole thing moves forward. You have recently joined the, the Main Street program, and the Main Street program is a really tried and tested program that's worked in a lot of small towns across the, hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of small-town downtowns. It's based on four main points: organization, promotion, design and economic vitality. The whole secret is that you gotta work on all of those together, as I said a while ago. You've got a good start in a lot of those areas, but I would really encourage keeping that going. To my mind, the most important and highest priority piece of this is recruiting and hiring a paid downtown manager to play an active role in coordinating all the efforts in the downtown. You really need, and people that have been coming to all these meetings are sick of hearing me say this, but you really need somebody that wakes up everybody worrying about what's going on downtown, and worrying about whether all the players are in line and whether things are moving forward, and pestering the city to get on with whatever it's doing, and pestering WSU to follow through on whatever they said they would do, and reminding that property owner that, you know, the sign is still broken on that building, or whatever it is. I think in the short run, I would recommend that the city work with WSU and others to provide some seed funding and get that person in place and working, and then build over two or three years to work toward property and business owners or helping fund that, too, through some sort of organized program. But I really think this is a place where the city could put a priority in getting this happening, that there's somebody that's really focused on that every day, somebody that's downtown, working out of an office right downtown, interacting with people, and pushing the program forward. Should be a familiar face here at City Hall. And then promotions, a key thing that would mostly fall to the Downtown Association is promoting downtown Pullman more deliberately and broadly, embracing and encouraging underutilized WSU activities, creating a calendar of promotions, changing downtown Pullman's role in the region. And I think this is a super opportunity for a partnership with the chamber, which does a great job of promoting the region and does a certain amount of downtown promotions. There are probably some that the chamber can just do. It's a great partnership. The chamber's been really instrumental in making this happen. But I think really stepping up on a promotions that are focused on downtown is, is intent very important to the success of the overall program. Design improvements, I'm not gonna touch on here, cause I feel like I've been talking about them for most of the, the presentation, but one of the things the downtown manager can do in the Downtown Association is kind of be the, be the community goad to keep pushing everybody forward to make those things happen and keep us going on the plan and making sure this plan comes true. And then finally, the economic vitality, working with the city's economic development manager, working to prioritize implementation of the entrepreneurship elements of this plan, working, and the downtown manager and the economic development director should get to know the property owners downtown, what their needs are, help them understand the vision for downtown, and then they can start making connections between people that wanna invest, or people that wanna have a business with property owners and those opportunities. So I've been talking really fast for a long time. I didn't talk very much, so that's pretty good. Six key options, enhancing the gems, building people centric, activating public space, magnifying the core, encouraging entrepreneurship and catalyzing leadership. And you gotta kinda do them all together. My thoughts on, I think the conversation that we're hoping you'll have now is about where you think the priorities are, and I'm certainly willing to address any questions. Off the top of my head, I'd say top priorities here are funding a downtown manager, stepping up the visibility of the Pullman Downtown Association, planning and executing the, a 2020, 2021 calendar of promotions that are downtown and promoting downtown, making two or three visible design improvements this year, so that people feel the momentum that we've been doing here. Publishing a visible downtown directory of the gems that you have and really starting to promote that and getting that out there. And beginning the design development and budgeting for the major public space improvements and, and street improvements that are outlined in here. That's what I'd make as your agenda for the first year. So with that, I'm, I guess I should, my, my last slide is that what comes from here next is a planning commission tomorrow night, a presentation and discussion, and then we'll finalize any edits we get back from the city in the next few weeks, and then I think this comes back to you for adoption in March.
Since this is the work session, just go ahead and start asking questions. Yeah, so, so Brian, I really appreciate your work on this, and I know a lot of community members are excited about this and have represented a great number of different groups, and have a lot of expertise in different areas of what you've done. Could you, not to get too into the weeds too fast, but I did hear an audible gasp from somebody when you mentioned three lanes to two lanes. Could you talk about induced demand and potentially something that you had said at one of the charets about designing our, our city for not just eight days of gear, but for the other
From the get-go on this project, you know, from before the first time we came to Pullman, we had heard that lane configurations and number of lanes on Main Street was an issue of interest in the community. Everybody on the consulting team has worked in a lot of different towns that have state highways that are main streets. And we knew that we had to address a question of, you know, what was the right number of lanes, and we spent a great deal of time talking about it. And your traffic counts on Main Street don't remotely justify three lanes. Two lanes... Two lanes is enough and it will be a little bit more congested once in a while if you do that, but you will still be at much higher performance of traffic movement than most other towns' main streets. And I think making that reduction in those number of lanes and allowing the angle parking and the better pedestrian improvements will just radically improve the experience of being on Main Street. And in, in our experience and in all kinds of national traffic studies, the idea that building more lanes relieves congestion, what building more lanes does is, I think you're referring to induced demand, is that when you build a really big road, people go there because it's a really big road and it ends up being congested. And if it's a smaller road, it's more congested and people find another way to go around it. So we have no doubt that this is the right move you should do and you should do it.
With your experience, how long does it take to go through the state to make sure you can do this? Or is it normally that the WashDOT gives you approval pretty quick?
Well, it depends on a lot of stuff and that's why we had Phil Boyd and Welsh Comer Engineering on our team because he has had those negotiations with WashDOT a number of times and he reached out and talked to them and they were, as I understand it, I wasn't in the room, but as I understand it, they said, well, they're absolutely happy to look at that and we're trying to talk them out of it. I'm not going to tell you how long it'll take. It won't take 15 minutes.
No, I know that. We've dealt with WashDOT, we know how long that takes.
But, but, but as I pointed out, the actual, actually executing this doesn't require anything but paint. And so you can, and, you know, it could be done fairly simply and, you know, and one of the great things is you can do it and a year later, if you don't like it, it only takes paint to change it back, too.
So I had a question with now the angled parking, the back-end parking. Have you seen any issues in, you know, all of your experience where, when communities go to that, are there additional accidents? I mean, you know, I can only imagine it's, it would be more difficult for some people for, to back in, and so I'm guessing there's going to be a learning curve, not only with the paint, the going to the two lanes, but also with the angled parking. Can you speak to that with your experience?
Well, anytime you change traffic configurations, there's a time of learning and there are often some fender benders because people are, are acting like the change wasn't there. That always happens. The, my experience of back-end angled parking, and I'm sorry, Phil's not here today, he's got a little video that explains how it works. My experience of back-end angled parking is that it's not that common yet and so it's a little counterintuitive, but it's way easier than front-in.
I practiced it over Olympia. Olympia has that.
Angle parking and it's, it's, you know, the truth is it's easier than parallel parking, which is what you have now, where you have to get into that funny little space. All you have to do is back in, you know, a little curve and you're kind of not used to it, but then when you come out, it's like awesome. You're right there, you can see the traffic, you know, and, and, you know, the, so it, and I don't, I don't have the data off the tip of my tongue, but I have watched Phil explain it in other communities, I've watched him explain it here, and I'm confident that it's a safe move and if, and be easy to get you a presentation just on that one thing if you need it.
I appreciate your experience in here. Thank you.
Well, one of the things that comes up as people go through this and they comment to me, when you suggest raising the building height to 65 feet, everybody goes, oh my God, do we really have to do that? We have to go higher. Well, it was explained to me and it made a lot of sense. And if we want to throw that over to Kevin or if Brian, you want to take it, why 65 feet and not 60 feet? Because once you hear it explained, it makes perfect sense.
Yeah. So there's a couple of things about building technology. First of all, five stories is how high you can build with wood. If you go more than five stories, you have to go to concrete and steel, which is much more expensive. So if you go to, if you go anywhere, but if you go to cities where there are more mixed-use buildings, apartment buildings, you'll notice really a lot of them are five stories tall or sometimes there's a two-story concrete podium and then five stories on top of that. And maybe if you look or you drive around Seattle, you'll see there's a really a lot of apartment buildings because it's that technology size. 65 feet allows you four floors that are, a 10-foot floor and then a tall first floor that allows a higher retail ceiling height. And when you hold it down to 60 feet, you don't, to get those floors in there, because you're going, if you're building the building and you're trying to make it profitable, you need to get a bunch of apartments in there so you can collect rent. So you need as many as you can get in there. So you're going to put those four floors up there or those five floors up there and then, and then if the ground floor gets shoved down by the ceiling height, then you end up having this ground floor space that doesn't feel good. And it doesn't, doesn't have, have kind of a high ceiling retail that you'd like. So that five feet really makes a lot of difference right there. And it's essentially where you're going to lose it is in how tile is the retail floor at the bottom. Because the economics of the building will, these days, will be all in the residential. And lots and lots and lots of these buildings are getting built and they're making, they're profitable based on the retail, the residential rents and what's on the ground floor isn't essential to the pro forma.
Plus, the impact of that additional five-foot height could be mitigated potentially by the design review standards that might be applied.
Great, great point, Pete. Thank you.
Another thing I really like about this, there's, I mean, there's some little technical things about the document itself, but we won't, we can take all that offline. But what I really like about it...
I can't wait.
Yeah, ask the people from Parks for Rec, yeah. Is that you've really laid out for us a roadmap for, for the design standards. We have, you've got like six steps in there that need to be accomplished for the design standards. So we have an absolute roadmap. I support that design standards as you've laid them out here. It's a community-based process. There's plenty of opportunities for review, discussion, input from the people that will be impacted, both in the community and as a builder and as a, or somebody who's repurposing a building or something like that. And you really laid that out for us in a way that is understandable to anybody who picks up this document and I really support us moving forward on that type of a design standard for the downtown, for the area that we're talking about here, and also looking at some of those zone changes. I think you've got some really solid recommendations on zone changes to make things happen in our downtown, which we've just kind of been roadblocked on because we really just kind of didn't know where to go with it. So now with both the design standards and with the zone change recommendations, I think you've really given us some open doors and all we need to do is walk through them.
Go ahead. So Brian, I, looking at these six priorities you have here now, if you were in our position and you said all within the first year is, is your suggestion, a first step, a second step, could you, could you walk me through what you would, you would do in our, our situation looking at these six priorities?
Yeah, yeah.
Didn't mean to put you on the spot here.
No, that's, so, well, I would do these six things.
Yeah, I know that. In order, I mean, are you ranking this in order, like the first one to get that downtown?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, I think the absolute, if you only did one thing, I would work with partners in the community to fund a full-time downtown manager to really start pushing the whole agenda, because I think that's what will get you to the rest of the agenda. So I would say that is a top priority and I'm, feel confident that the university would partner with you in that. And I'm guessing you can find some other economic players in the community that would also partner in that. And I was, so I don't think it has to be all in the city. I don't think it should be, and it certainly shouldn't be all in the city forever, but I think the city can be a catalyst there. I would, and then if you do that, the next, you have a much greater shot at doing the next two, which is stepping up the visibility of the Downtown Association, which has been doing a great job the last couple of years with some part-time staffing provided by the university and a lot of volunteer effort and, you know, congratulations to Gene and all the folks from the Downtown Association. They've been doing a great job, but we got to take it to the next level. So that needs to happen. And then really pushing a calendar of promotions in concert with the Chamber. Those two, I don't think are a lot of work. I think the hard part for the city on the second one and the third one is the first one, you know, is get, is getting that to happen. And then, and then I would say working together and with the, there's so much energy on design improvements in this town. I mean, the, the, we couldn't, we couldn't meet with the design committee enough to satisfy their taste and, and, you know, they have a lot of energy. So what I would do is pick two or three things out of this plan that have the most energy behind them and momentum and get them done so that people can see something every day when you come downtown. I know, I don't think it makes a ton of difference which ones there are, but some visible design improvements, you want to do them all eventually, but pick out some ones that you think you can get done so that you see something soon. And then the downtown directory, I think that's pretty straightforward. It's, you know, these consultants came in and talked to a lot of people and saw a bunch of stuff and we made a list of things we called gems. That's not rigorous enough to call it like a finished product. Y'all need to figure out what should be on that map, but it's probably a good first draft. And, and, you know, start figuring out a way to, so that when somebody comes into town and they get on their app or whatever it is and they say, what's in Pullman, something shows up and says, look at all this stuff that's happening downtown. I mean, I mean, there's, I've worked in so many towns bigger than Pullman that would kill for the Black Cypress, you know, or, you know, or for that pizza place on the river or, you know, for some of the other, you know, great things that are here, the, the dress shop on, on, on Grand. There's just, there's so many good, special places, you should be promoting that. And then, and then the things I made people gasp in the room and the big things, the big street changes and stuff, those aren't going to happen this year, but they aren't going to happen until you start doing the design development. So I would be, you know, I'd be charging Kevin with getting going on getting those things, getting the detailed design work.
So you don't think we'll just do it this summer, huh?
I'll help you paint.
Thank you, Brian.
I really like this whole thing, but what I really like is that it isn't only about buildings and streets, it's also primarily about people. And I love this cultural corridor idea originally from Flint, Michigan. And one of the things that has maintained through all of the ups and downs and downs and downs is the, is the Flint Arts Community and they, they have this, that just started with a planetarium and a museum and it's grown. But I like the idea of, of people being able to enjoy art all over downtown, but that it's attracting them to this particular area, which would really, really promote our library, which is a, is a hidden gem.
I think the library is terrific and the librarian is awesome.
Yes.
Did you hear that, Joanna?
She is.
She's brought your turn right out.
It isn't random that we, her, her inspiration for the library helped inspire us to that idea.
But even each of the public areas talking about the accessibility, but also the enjoyment of it and not, again, it isn't just about infrastructure and bricks. It's about, you know, making it enjoyable.
Absolutely. Glad you appreciate it. I agree completely.
Working with some other consultants, one of the things that pops up every now and again, which I do not see in here, is coming up with a communication plan that conveys this to the community. Because right now we have a lovely document in front of us and we're having meetings tonight and meetings tomorrow, but we really don't have a communication plan for keeping the community informed of where we're at on certain things. And would you recommend that maybe we put some thought into developing a communication plan?
Hire a downtown manager and tell them to have a communication plan implemented.
Gets back to that all the time.
Yes, you should, but you got to have somebody that, I mean, you, you, the main thing, a communications plan would say, do these things, but then somebody's got to do them. And I'm, I'm, I'm all about, let's get that person in place. Absolutely, I'm not trivializing it, but I'd say that's the first step.
I have a question. What are the best design review boards that you have seen implemented? I mean, as far as how they're structured, I know they're, they can be voluntary, they can be, you know, have, obviously have staff. Some of them are quasi-judicial, which then takes on a whole different aspect. So what have you seen as far as best practices out there?
That's a good question. I'm not central to what I do every day, so I can't like rattle off three towns or something. I would say that in my experience, the most effective design review boards are the ones where they have a, a clear and fairly simple set of guidelines and they have a passionate group of people who work together to do everything they can to make those guidelines come true. And usually that's a blend of some rules and some incentives and a whole lot of passion and public education. My first, my first downtown revitalization project was in a town of 1,000 people in the Outer Banks of North Carolina where I went to graduate school. And I had the opportunity to go last summer back to that town and I went, I found the guy that was, had been the very young mayor at the time that I was there in 1980 and sat in his living room and we yacked it up about what had happened in the last 40 years. And he started talking about their design review group and, you know, he, we was talking about, you know, they, they, there's a McDonald's in that town, but there aren't any other fast food businesses because they've been, they've, they've got the code written so that they can't do it. And they've had some big battles on that. And, you know, and he was telling me about that story and so I'm not arguing here, here nor there for fast food chains, but, but his comment at one point, he says, he said, oh, they know we don't want them here. And he kind of smirked. And, and, you know, that told me that they had been so clear about what they wanted in their town and what they didn't want in their town that they just really promoted it. And you can, you can walk around that town and you get a feel, everybody kind of gets the vibe. And the, the design guidelines aren't mandatory. There's height and there's some other things, but it's, they're so passionate about it that, and in my experience, if, if the community's real clear about what it wants, most people go off, you know, because it's, you really don't want to, you know, come into town and piss everybody off, you know? And I think so it's that passion, clarity, simplicity, passion. And I could ask Leslie and Jeff, who wrote that section of the report, to give you some examples. I'm pretty sure they'd tell you Langley in Washington.
Yeah.
But I...
Bellingham, Kent, Spokane Valley.
Yeah.
Well, I can tell you where they went wrong, too. Look at Burien and Iskwa, yeah.
On the accessible parking, I really like kind of what you've outlined here. The illustrations make it really kind of clear what that looks like and the potential for that. Do you have any recommendations for the interim until we get to that changing the street state? Because we kind of have a need for that now.
Yes.
And when you're, when you were looking at that issue, you know, we talked about more in like on-street parking and, but was there any discussion of placement, like where should those be placed or, or discussion of kind of how to spread them out or how to choose where to place them?
You have a lot of city-owned parking lots. They are woefully underserved with accessible parking places. If I was in charge, I would convene the same group that you convened to meet with me a few months ago, and I would say, the mayor says, we're going to build five accessible spaces downtown this summer. Help us know where should they be and, you know, see if you could work out with them where they want them the most. That's how I'd do it.
Page 51.
Because, because you've got half a dozen folks that are very articulate on this subject and my take is that they're right.
Including you, that are very articulate.
Thank you.
Something that can be addressed pretty quickly.
Just with some paint.
That's right.
And a sign. You have to have a sign.
You have to have a sign. It's got to be at the right height. But it's, it could be done for hundreds or a few thousand dollars. It's not a, it's not a budget buster.
We haven't talked budget so far, except for obviously with the downtown manager. In your experience in other cities, when you're laying things out like this, is there like a range that, or each city is different? like a range that, or each city is different in terms of how much money is involved in doing many of the recommendations?
Now, it's all over the place, because, I mean, there are, there are extremely expensive fiscal improvements that are mentioned in as planned as possible. And, and some communities do those things, and many don't. My attitude is always focus on the things that are gonna make other things happen, and don't wait till you have $20 million to do the big-
And all the grants in Alaska, yeah.
Because, because you kind of never get there often.
Yeah.
And, and get the things going, because my sense is, you know, if the big deal's gonna cost $5 million, and that seems like inadequately, well, get a whole bunch of stuff going, and three years from now, $5 million might not seem like that big a deal because you've got so much stuff happening. You know, it's, that's my sense, is you get, you get the ball rolling, you know, I mean, somewhere in there, we say, "You could consider doing a bypass," you know, "Going across the river or something." You know, that'd be really expensive, and I don't know if you'll ever do that, but there are folks that think that'd be a good idea, and they might be right. But I wouldn't start there, you know? And I would, you know, I would absolutely, I would, I would try and, I'd go for the lane reduction as fast as you can make it happen, and do all the other things that are easy, and keep working on other ones.
Other comments from council or questions?
Councilor Swornson, you've been really quiet down there.
Yeah. I'm just trying to digest the whole thing. I've only had it for, since last week. There's a lot of pages in the report and a lot to figure out. I do appreciate the priorities from you up there, whether I agree with them or not. But I, I do think the report is very thorough and it's got some good recommendations in there that you can look at. I look forward to diving into it a little more and discussing it in more in depth and not just at a council meeting, which has been given us the report tonight. So I have a, I have a number of things on my mind, but not for right now.
All right. And that's one of the discussions that we've had earlier, that we'll do a deeper dive in another meeting when you've had a chance to go through and you've listened to the presentation tonight. And one of the things that I know Kevin and, and the city administrator and the rest of us are all looking for is, is the priorities, what to attack first. We've had some discussion about that, goal setting. We've had, we've talked about, number one was downtown, and start working on that, and this is a result of that. So now we just need to start setting some priorities for what we have in that, that look-along. And I think, Adam, did we not set, what, what meeting did we tentatively put for the next addressing this?
Kevin and I haven't had a-
You haven't had a chance?
Haven't had a chance, but we can, we can do it on the 17th.
Okay. And then tomorrow night, you'll be doing the presentation with the Planning Commission. They'll have a whole different set of questions.
I will ask you a question in regards to the sidewalk situation in downtown. There's a little, little mention about some of that, but not a lot. Our sidewalks are in horrendous shape. And to me, that's one of the priorities, and that's what I will push later on here. But, you know, to do that, you then at the same time have to have figured out what you're gonna do with the streets and everything else. So there's, there's a lot that all goes to it, but I, I really do think that that is a, very big priority for the safety of our citizens and, and the look and feel of downtown.
I think, I agree with you. The, I would say that you absolutely should make the decisions about how the street's gonna be configured, so when you start doing construction, you're building toward a common vision.
Right.
I do think fixing places where the sidewalks are dangerous is important. I personally, it's, you know, completely up to you, and it's not incompatible with our plan. I wouldn't prioritize a wholesale replacement of the sidewalks downtown just because it would be really expensive, and I think in many places, they're okay. So I would prioritize repairs where they need to be repaired and prioritize some of the other things in there. But that's a personal opinion, and nothing wrong with replacing the sidewalks.
So, Brian, I guess maybe this relates to, we, we have a finite amount of space from building to building downtown, and as I've seen the renderings, obviously, we're trying to put in a bike lane, we're trying to put in parking, trying to put in angle parking, which will fit more parking in, which people, I think it's important to a lot of people. At what point did, or maybe had you thought about sidewalk width? Because a lot of places that, that I go to, the sidewalks are wider, and maybe it allows more room for outdoor seating, things like that, you know, which is-
Yeah, we thought about it, and there's sections in all of those diagrams that have widths and everything outlined on there that are about your streets. I didn't do it, so I don't have the numbers that they had, I can't rattle them off out of my head, but every one of those street sections has got a width for the sidewalk.
That are wider right now? I mean, are we expanding the sidewalks or?
I think so. I think so.
So some were, and some weren't.
Okay.
I mean, there's a, there's a lot of recommendations in there of some staying the same width they are now and wider.
And I think I was trying to figure out, I mean, in different places, you've got different distances between the buildings. So I know that Jeff and Leslie and Phil and Jack worked really hard on that, and they were working on the different parts, and we, and we had a lot of dialogue with, Jamie was actively a part of that. We had a lot of dialogue about, you know, different folks that, you know, and we were trying to accommodate all of those uses. So we'd stand by the, the specs we've got in there, as we think the best thing you could do with a people-centric priority. And that was what we, I mean, I'm way more worried about the people that aren't in their cars than the people that are in their cars.
Yeah, some of the, some of those, that's one of the things that I noticed, too, was the, some of the design schematics, kind of it depends on where we're prioritizing what design elements. So if we have a bike lane, a two-way bike lane with a buffer zone of planters, that's gonna impede on our space allotment for how much sidewalk we can have versus some of the other designs that, that have the bike lane on the outside of the, the parking lane than without that planter. So I mean, like, all those types of things that you get into minutia are things that kind of we need to start picking away at in future planning sessions of what are the design elements we want, and how is that gonna impact the things that come next?
Right. Because if we put in, if we don't put in angle parking, if we leave parallel on both sides, you could have more room for wider sidewalks, but then you lose the additional parking, too.
That's true.
Big give and take on this.
But I think we're gonna gain parking just by designating spaces, whereas now we don't have any designated spaces, and people just, you know, leave a lot of room in between cars because it's easier to park or whatever. I think we lose some. Eileen, you disagree?
Well, unfortunately, or fortunately, I've had Bryce keeping, keeping me informed about all these different, and the, the statistics don't really bear that out, whether there's lines on the street or not. It doesn't, it just doesn't-
I know we had some discussion with Mark Workman was-
Yeah, it just doesn't, that particular thing, it's one of those things that sounds like it ought to be true, but it's not. And, and it just depends on how you want to manage the parking, though. In terms of enforcement, it might be an advantage to have the lines painted on the streets. So then you can, you can manage, that's a, a different aspect of parking management. And the other thing I, I didn't ask about until just this minute was another one of the things that, that Bryce included us in on, was to look at the angle of the dangle on the angle parking, because you can, you can make significant changes in the number of spaces available by how you angle the parking. I think all of this is 45-degree angle parking, which is the most common, but there may be not your area, because there may be some other-
I had my, my engineer do, do their drawing, I don't know.
But you, you did show that you picked up parking because of the backup.
Yeah.
You did pick up, it was 82 or something like that.
Yeah, so, but by the time you put in the ADA parking, we need to do a recount on that.
I'm sure Phil would be happy to attend a future meeting. He talked about it coming tonight, but then he had another conflict.
Because we want to make sure that we are, we are hitting those priorities that citizens have asked for. And, you know, because sometimes what sounds like the right thing is not necessarily the right thing when you really start counting.
I thoroughly believe that the plan that is in front of you is the best we could do at reflecting what everybody was asking for, and we talked to a lot of people a lot of times.
Yes.
I really think this is a reflection of what Pullman's asking for.
And you, and you did a great, I heard so many positive comments by the charrettes, that people felt like they were listened to, and we really appreciate that you did basically coalesce all the information there together.
Doesn't mean that we got everything everybody said, but-
Right.
Yeah, we, we did our best to sort of find the middle path.
And we asked for your expertise to say, "Okay, what is the priorities in this?"
And honestly, it's very, very impressive. I mean, all of it, that's-
So number four up there, make two or three visible design improvements. What are your top three?
It's not my talent.
You said we could do ADA parking right away. That would be one noticeable thing right away.
Yes, the lanes.
We could certainly get that moving. We could start working on lanes.
Yeah.
With WashDOT.
I mean, if you could get the, if you could get the three lanes to two lanes down, I'd put that, you know, if you, but if you can't get it done in 2020, then do, do two or three other things, just because I want to see stuff happen, but just visible, visible elements. And it's gonna have to do with, you know, what can you get funded? You know, yeah, I know that sometimes you could, somebody will pay for banners, but somebody won't pay for signs, or vice versa, or so. If somebody's motivated on something, do that, because you, you know, get, get some stuff going.
Character lighting.
And we, yeah, character lighting, we've had some suggestions of people that might step up the High Street Mall, and we've had some other things like that, too.
Well, and I think that Pine Street piece, where we're talking about it, would be a thoroughfare, but then it could also be an event space. Just the, the pavers in there, and even putting some landscaping, some green space in there is very visual, and I think people would see that right away.
Right away. I've been doing some work in Colville, which is much smaller than Pullman. And I finished a downtown plan for them early in 2019, and I had not been there until about three weeks ago. And I was back there, and I sat down at the table with a bunch of the people that I'd been helping organize a downtown organization. I said, "How's it going?" And they went on for 20 minutes about how excited they were and all the great stuff that was happening and all, how they're all working together, which had really made me feel happy. But one of the things they kept talking about was the, the tree lighting, and they've put a bunch of lights in the trees, and clearly, it has excited people in town. You know, it was just something that they all did together, and they were all really happy about it.
I always liked the holiday season, because we got lights on our trees, and it'd be nice to have up here around.
Just an immediate response, and they did that, they liked it.
Yeah. And they've lost some businesses up there, too, so they were, they really needed to get going.
They were way, feeling way better about their downtown last week than they were a year and a half ago.
Yeah, right. That's fantastic.
Brian, can I ask a question about Main and Grand? This, this diagram that you have with the curb bulbs?
Uh-huh.
Thinking about, and I know we don't have as big of issue with semis and larger trucks as we think we do, according to what I've heard before. I mean, it's, the perception is different than the reality, maybe. But I look at this, and I worry about, I'm concerned about big trucks coming down and making that turn around that-
And driving it over.
Around that curb bulb. Does that-
That, that diagram was drawn by a transportation engineer.
But I mean, does it, okay, you know, I'm not doubting the efficacy of it, I'm just, it concerns me if we're attracting pedestrians to come out onto their-
How often do you cross that intersection as pedestrian?
I have a lot in my time here.
Do, do it three times this week, and you'll be ready to do that tomorrow.
Yeah.
That's a horrible intersection to be a pedestrian in.
It is, it is.
Yeah.
So this is kind of a traffic calming thing, too, to slow them down.
Traffic calming and just making it not so damn far from one side of the street to the other side of the street.
Right, yeah, I think I did it three or four times today, and especially when people go whizzing through there, and you can tell they're on their phone, you know, it's just like-
Somebody hit that little curve in front of them.
Yeah, it's like, yikes, yeah.
And the other one's just going left up there in the left-hand lane, that's where we've had pedestrians injured, making a turn onto Grant.
And I think this-
We have something to slow that down.
And I don't think this diagram really changes a whole lot in terms of semi-traffic and the directionality of where they're going from where we currently have, other than, you know, going down West Main Street towards Rand, turning right there, but I just don't see a lot of semi doing that from up by Gladish coming down.
No, no.
And we've, we've seen some, semi-truck drivers now, they're just going, they're actually going down Olson, turning on Cameoak, and then turning on Paradise, just to avoid some of the other turns that they've kind of, we're seeing a variety of that. And of course, they're using Bishop's Boulevard.
Yeah. That's right here, but, I mean.
Since, we have, Brian, any more questions of him before we, and again, we're gonna tackle some more later on if you have some more. We put the presentation tonight, time to digest, we'll have input from Planning Commission, because they're gonna be listening to it tomorrow night, so Pete, you get it twice.
Looking forward to it.
Yeah.
I just gotta say, you know, the Pine Street, just a comment on this, the Pine Street really tracks with what we were discussing before. So it's definitely encouraging to also have your expertise to back up what, you know, we had thought before as well, so I appreciate that.
Excellent.
No more questions? Okay. Then according to our agenda, is there any new business to come before the council tonight? Seeing none, then do I hear a motion to adjourn?
It's so moved.
Second.
Moved to second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?